You got that chair.
Yeah.
Oh, one of these, too. Let's move me, oh, yeah, Zach. You've stopped calling me for speeches. You gotta like that. Are we ready? It is just a little after four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the October 6th meeting to order. I'm not sure, are these on? Yeah, are they? Okay, great. If we could get the clerk to call the roll, please?
Can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, you can't hear me? Okay, I guess, oh, there we go, there we go. Okay, great. I was, as I was saying, maybe for the at-home people who couldn't hear it, it is just a little after four. We'll go ahead and call the October 6th, 2014 meeting to order. If the clerk would call the roll, please?
Mayor, Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here. At this time, all who are able, if you would please join me in the salute to our flag in a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards and proclamations today, so that'll take us to our citizens forum. And this is an opportunity for anyone to come speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda. We just ask that you please give your name and address when you come up and speak.
Lou Tryon, 2122 Leland Way. I'm here to give some facts on fluoridation that were not included in yesterday's article that I thought were quite important. They talked about Grand Rapids, Michigan, in that article. Yes, it was the first city in the world to be fluoridated. And so, at that same time, that happened in 1945, at that same time, the city of Muskegon was designated as the control city that would not be fluoridated. So, that's what they did. And they said, "This will be for a 15-year period, and then we'll check the dental carries in each one of them and see what the difference is." So, that's what they did. Well, after five years, Muskegon ended up being fluoridated because it was looking like Grand Rapids, Michigan was having a lot more carries or tutty-kay than Muskegon. But anyway, skipping up to 1962 in regards to this Grand Rapids, Michigan, that would be 17 years later, Dr. John Knudsen of the U.S. Public Health Service examined the cancer death rates following the fluoridation of the public water supplies of Grand Rapids, Michigan. He found a 22% increase in cancer death rates contrasted to the unfluoridated control city of Muskegon. So, those two were compared. It self-fluoridated five years into the 15-year test in order to conceal the greater carries prevalence in Grand Rapids. And that comes from the fluoride drinking water magazine, page 213. In 1962, also according to the November 1962 Journal of the American Dental Association, from 10% to 20% of the children in fluoridated Grand Rapids, Michigan developed dental fluorosis. In 1962, noted cancer researcher, Dr. Ludwig Gross, whose work on leukemia was invaluable in cancer research and whose findings prompted a government crash program, was put on report after writing. The plain fact is that fluoride is an insidious poison, harmful, toxic, and cumulative in its effects, even when ingested in minimal amounts. It will remain unchanged, no matter how many times it will be repeated in print, that fluoridation of the water supply is safe. And he was working for the U.S. Public Health Service at that time. Another 1965, researchers at the University of Texas, Dr. Alfred and Elle Taylor, found that fluoride in the drinking water at levels between .5 and 1 parts per million increased tumor growth rate in cancer-prone mice by 15 to 25%, inhibiting the efforts of the immune system to attack these tumors. Skipping to 1992, a scientific study reveals that fluorides in the water supply to 1 parts per million is associated with an increase in hip fracture rates of women, and that fluoride accumulates with age and may reach toxic levels in a person's lifetime. And that came from the Journal of the American Medical Association. Fluoride increases hip fractures. This came from the Journal of American Medical Association as well. Drinking fluoridated water will double the number of hip fractures for both older men and women. And that's the opposite of what was said in the article, that it was minimum, minimal, and sometimes it didn't even change at all. Extremely low levels of water fluoridation, .1 parts per million still produced statistically significant increased hip fractures. And that came from the American Medical Association as well, from the Boroduk's study, 1994. Then there was a little question about maybe fluoride was maybe a nutrient and beneficial to the body. Fluoride is a carcinogen. Fluoride was found to be an equivocally carcinogenic by the National Cancer Institute's toxicology logical program, and also, the EPA lists fluoride as a carcinogen on the neurotoxic Lastly, fluoride increases infertility. Infertility in women was found to increase with water fluoridation. And this was reported in 1994. Food and Drug Administration, FDA scientists, reported a close correlation between decreased total fertility rates in women between ages of 10 and 49 and increasing fluoride levels. They also reported that a review of all the animal studies done to date shows that fluoride adversely affects fertility in most animal species. And that came from the Journal of Toxicology and Environment, volume 42 and 94. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tryon.
Dennis Benoit, 1773 20th Road in Elsworth County, about six miles outside the town of Conoplis. But I was born here, and so was my mother. So, I consider Salina, Kansas, my hometown. So, I talked about this a little bit last week, but some people couldn't understand. So, I'd like to show this so the people at home can receive this. This is what they call the optimum concentration that they put the fluoride, they add the fluoride that we buy from China, and then they mix it up, so they get this sort of concentration. If you can see, in 2010, the high range, the low range, or, well, the low range, the high range. Well, in 2013, three years later, this is the latest water quality sheet you can get. They come out in June or July. It is now .54 to .64. So, they've reduced it quite a bit, quite a bit. And you would say, "Well, why would they reduce that?" Like I said before, this is the 2010 CDC about dental fluorosis. This is, this came out in 2010, but actually, this was a study from 1999 to 2004. So, right today, we're talking, this is 10 years old. Are they lowering the amount? We all know that fluoride is in a lot of things. It's all around us. It's increasing. And has that created a crisis? You have it in your toothpaste? Well, on the second page, over 40% of the 12- to 15-year-olds have some form of dental fluorosis. That means an increase over the 1987, and they first started off in 1950, just the fluoridated areas, and they found 10%. Is there a dental fluorosis crisis? Well, like I said, you have to read the definition. And usually, it's going to be on page five, depending on what format you print this. You can check this information out on the Internet. And it's the first eight years of a child's life, the exposure to fluoride. And that means, to me, the first nine months are the most critical, in the woman's womb, when, if she's drinking the fluoridated water here in Salina, she is feeding fluoride to that baby via her placenta. In 2006, the American Dental Association recommended to parents, "Do not mix baby formula with fluoridated water." And the reason for that? Mother's milk has a minuscule amount, .004, of fluoride. So, if you're mixing it, then you are overexposing that baby, that infant, to fluoride. So, that's just a review, and I'll keep doing that, because some people just still don't understand it at home. I've talked to a couple people. And it's hard, yes, but you have to be aware of this information at home, so you can go out and be an informed voter this November the 4th. And I'd like to give a little advertisement. This Thursday, Mark Geetson from Wichita is coming up here. He was instrumental in stopping fluoridation down there. And he's going to be talking. We're going to be over at the Prescott Room, lower level of the library, 7:00 PM. That's Thursday, the 9th. So, please come out. And for you people at home that do not have a computer, you do, you can't find a 12- or 15-year-old child to Google for you, just look at the back of your toothpaste container, and you will get the basics. What is fluoride? It's toxic. If your toothpaste has drug warning, drug facts, you know it has fluoride in it. The other ones, I get Toms, unfluoridated, it doesn't have a warning, it doesn't need a warning. But if you have fluoride in your toothpaste, they have to put on a warning. And also, the last day to register, if you are going to be 18, talked to a young lady this earlier today, she wasn't registered. She's over 18. Last day to register, if you're going to be 18 by Election Day, you need to register by October the 14th. They have late registration, open till 9:00 PM at night. Take advantage of that. Use your superpower that voting is. Voting, put these people right here, basically, in their seats. And by your voting, you can keep them there, or if you don't vote for them, and you decide to vote for somebody else, that is how our system works. And it does work. I would only refer to a sitting commissioner got the least amount of votes out of three candidates. That shows you, your vote counts. Do not waste it by not using it. And, of course, early voting will start on the 15th. So, I would suggest early voting to, don't be caught in the lines, because I'm hoping for a good turnout. So, thank you.
Good, thank you, sir. Anyone else with anything to bring?
My name is Margie Brule, and I live at 803 East Minneapolis Avenue, here in Salina, Kansas. I have many reasons why I want the Salina to stop the fluoridation. Number one reason is our health. But here's what bugs the heck out of me. I wonder, and I worry about this, do all the people in Salina realize that when we bathe, the fluoride and all the other chemicals that's put in our water goes right through the pores into our system? And we have health problems from that. Therefore, the more leisure the bath, the more chemicals we get, and the end result then is more health problems. So, please, please vote yes to stop fluoridation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Charles?
I'm Mara Main, 524 North 12th Street in Salina, Kansas. And I'm wanting to tell you why you should vote yes in the November election on the fluoride issue. I would like you to vote to stop the fluoridation. By getting rid of the fluoride in water, we will save money because of the chemicals. I'm allergic to it and can't do fluoride treatments, drink the water, and also, can't use toothpaste that has fluoride in it. I have to buy bottled water and toothpaste that doesn't have fluoride in it. My throat swells and starts to close after I drink fluoride. So, I'm asking everyone to please vote yes on November 4th, yes to stop fluoridation.
Thank you, Ms. Main.
Cheryl Musfow, 1035 Merrily Circle. We Americans love our rights and our freedom of choice. In regards to fluoridation, not unlike those of you that believe the women's rights to birth control are being taken away by the county commissioners, in 1968, our right to water that is safe enough for our babies to drink was taken from us by the four men that were on the city commission at that time. In January of 2011, the United States Health and Human Services lowered the level of the so-called fluoride in the water due to the health effects childrens were receiving. How many children were harmed in Salina during the first 45 years of fluoridation? They say it was harming children? What was it the fluoride doing to the soft tissues of the adults that drank that same water? What if studies showed that fluoride accumulates in the bone and can cause hip fractures and bone cancer? What if studies showed that fluoride increases asthma? What if tests showed high amounts of aluminum in the fluoride being added to your water? Aluminum is a heavy metal, a secondary contaminant on your consumer water report. If the studies show aluminum could cause ADD, ADHD, as well as Alzheimer, is it worth putting it in the water? I'm asking the citizens of Salina to vote yes between October 15th and November 4th to end Water Fluoridation Ordinance 7096, mostly because we Americans like our rights and our freedom to choose, but also because of the risk that outweigh the benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musfow.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ray Haruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I had a report written here, but I'm going to start it off a little different way than I anticipated. I would say, "Let the dentist sell all the fluoride they want to. Just don't put it in the water and force me to drink and bathe in poison." I just thought of that one, you know, it just came up here. But my actual speech was here to understanding how osteoporosis weakens the bones. Now, this is from John Hopkins, 2014. The word osteoporosis means porous bone. A person with osteoporosis typically has low bone mass, poor bone quality, and fragile bones. Approximately 10 million Americans, mostly women, have already, already have osteoporosis, and 34 more million are at increased risk because of low bone mass or osteopenia. Weakened bones that fracture easily are the hallmark of osteoporosis, which results in an abnormality in an ongoing process called bone remodeling. Okay? During remodeling, bone is resorbed or broken down by cells called osteoclasts to provide the body with calcium, the main constituent of bone, and to repair microscopic fractures. Osteoblasts, another type of cell, then generate new bone to replace the old, the bone removed by resorption. Bone mass is maintained as long as bone replacement keeps up with bone resorption. When resorption outpaces replacement, osteoporosis develops. Because the spine is particularly susceptible to this imbalance, osteoporosis often causes small cracks in the vertebrae, which can lead to compression fractures. And plus, the femoral neck part of the hip joint is also highly vulnerable to osteoporosis. And that's what I have from John Hopkins. And here's my two cents. Breaking a hip is a death sentence for the elderly. I've heard that more than a few times. And fluoride likes calcium and readily attaches to it. The U.S. Public Health Service has stated that fluoride makes the bones more brittle and dental enamel more porous. It's not a stretch that fluoride may be contributing, may be a contributing factor regarding osteoporosis. Why take the chance? Vote yes to stop fluoride in Salina's water. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming out. I know it's an odd time in the afternoon. I appreciate you taking the time to come out and speak to us all today. We have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so that moves us on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 22nd, 2014. 6.2, Resolution Number 14, dash 7139, appointing members to various boards and commissions. Item 6.3, accept the offered water line easement dedication for the public water line now serving the St. Mary's Elementary School. Item 6.4, accept the offered drainage easement dedications for the detention base and serving the Salina Montessori preschool. And item 6.5, authorize the issuance of a purchase order for a new performance stage from Stage Right Inc. for installation of the Salina Bicentennial Center in the amount of $94,720.
Is there any item on the consent agenda a Commissioner would like removed or to amend?
I'd like to remove items 6.2 and 6.4. I have a question on each.
Okay. Any other items Commissioner would like to remove or amend? Okay, removing items 6.2 and 6.4. Do I have a motion to approve the remaining?
I move we approve items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.5.
Second.
Motion to approve 6.1, 6.3, and 6.5, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and that'll take us to item 6.2. Rather than have, Ms. Wicks, is there a specific question?
I don't think she's even here.
Yeah, I just, I just...
Yeah, I do have a specific question, that is regarding, and then, in the general statement, I'm maybe looking for, looking beyond this into the process. But I did notice, on one of these, is that I was under the assumption that there was a requirement for an, within the city limits requirement, and there was an appointment made with someone residing outside of the city limits. How do we, how do we normally deal with that? Do we vote on it now and then take care of that later, or do we take care of that now?
If there's, if there's a board, if there's a requirement for a board member to be eligible for appointment, to be, to reside within the city limits, I would think that that probably should be caught. I'll defer it to legal counsel, but I would expect practically that we would, should recognize that ahead of time. And we really have two choices. One is, is that we, we could say, "Well, that doesn't qualify unless you can show up until the appointment time you live in the city limits." Or two, we submit them all, we put a note that says, "This person's not eligible for appointment, but at least you know who it is." I'm not sure. I'd have to, I'd have to check with the Clerk's office, and Mickey may know, I'm not sure what our practice has been, because we really don't run into that very often, I don't think. But I would expect one of those two options. Probably the best option would be to just leave it in, let you know who it is, and then that way, you know that that person submitted, but they didn't qualify. So, that way, you're at least aware, and you had full disclosure.
Okay. And then also, and this is a side, a side note to that, is, do we know when the last time we sort of reviewed the policy for board appointments and who reviews it? Because I know, just a poll between Commissioner Hardy and myself, and I assume it's the same with anybody that has never been the mayor, is that we don't even see any of this information about people that have filled out an expression of interest until this list of appointments gets to our desk. So, I think there's always the assumption that they are mayoral appointments, when in fact, they are just simply mayoral proposals.
And I'd like to add to that. I'm glad you brought that up, Vice Mayor. At one point, and I remember this back, like, 1980-something, we did it differently. And I think Mayor Soderbergh was the one that changed this whole process so that it wasn't, because it got to the point where department heads were kind of saying, "We'll take this one." And the same person would be on the board, you know, several times, because that was the person the department head belonged with. And she changed that process so that it would be more looked at by the commission. And I'm kind of like you, I'm kind of curious about how that's working.
Yeah, formally, there's nothing in our policy that addresses the question of whether you get a recommendation from an individual, whether it be a department head, from, from the board itself, from the chairperson of the board, or another member. There's nothing that addresses that recommendation aspect. So, it's, historically, in practice, occasionally, you would possibly get recommendations. Arts and Humanities Commission is a good example of that, I think, historically. We have had, and it depends on the flavor of the commission, we have had historically times in which we have had a mayor that did not necessarily care for a recommendation, but usually, other than that situation, no one else really, it didn't really matter, as long as they had the members in front. And of course, it's your final decision. So, the recommendation can mean something, or it can mean zero. It's really up to you. But the policy's never addressed that, to my knowledge. The current policy does not address that at all. So, that's something that you could think about. If you decided, "Well, we don't, we don't want a recommendation from our current board or staff," we could incorporate that if we wanted to. It's not very often, I don't think, today, that you get a staff recommendation so much. It's probably more from the board, but can't say that hasn't happened at all. But we try to stay pretty far away from those appointments. The other, the other piece is, is that Commissioner Blanchard, you're correct, in the sense that the mayor recommends, and then the, the Commissioners have the role of ratifying. And if there's not agreement on the ratification, you have the ability through majority, I believe, in the process to modify. I'll look to city legal counsel, make sure I'm accurate with that. And when we had a conversation earlier, and I was under the impression, because I stay pretty far away from board appointments, I really don't want, I really don't want staff to be involved. That's really your domain. We're there to help once you get them appointed. But I was under the impression that each of you received all the expression of interest forms for those considered for each of the boards. And you should have that, because otherwise, you're not in a position to properly consider the mayor's recommendations.
We did used to get those.
Yeah, I'm not, I couldn't tell you when and what prompted any kind of change, but you need to get those. So, I made a note, and have also already corresponded with our staff, that we need to have you do that. With that in mind, you could choose today, if you would like, to postpone for a week, allow us the opportunity to get you that information, so that you have that fully, and then bring that back.
Right.
That's your choice. But I think we could do that. We can, I don't, I haven't talked to anyone with regards to the timing of the appointments and so forth, but I can't fathom one week is going to harm us too much.
Okay, yeah, it seems reasonable.
Well, I do know that, just one part of that, I'd like to postpone, but I do know that there are meetings this week, particularly Planning Commission and other ones, that we do have board members on here, and I do know that a lot of those boards are short. So, I don't want to really hold up. Is it, is it at all possible to say, because that's really my only concern, is that that one small little detail in that one is, is that requirement is fulfilled? And if it is, I want to get that person on that board and going immediately. So, can we make these subject to, if, if the qualifications aren't met, that that, that is, that that's remedied? I mean, I know that we've done that in the past. There was an incident on the Planning Commission where we made an appointment, and then it was determined that that individual lived outside of the county, required three-mile access area. So, that person just simply came off the board at that time. Could we not just do that?
Kind of speaking of like a contingency appointment in that case.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at Greg, you're comfortable with that?
Just so that, so that these boards can get, can get rolling.
Yeah, and we can, we'll check that for you.
Okay.
That's okay, and we'll, we'll make sure that we communicate that with regards to the appointment. It shouldn't take long to check as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And if, if the case is that that person would not qualify, then we'll need to bring that back to you next week.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, with that in mind, then, is there a motion to go ahead and approve 6.2 or not?
Yeah, I would, and, so, on 6.2... Yeah, I, I would, and so on 6.2, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt Resolution Number 14-7139.
Second.
Motion is second to approve 14-7139. Any further discussion?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Could we make that expressly conditioned upon confirmation of qualification in each case?
Contended upon the qualifications.
Is that square with your second?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
That, that gets you going? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us to 6.4. Again, same thing, if you could.
Six, yeah, 6.4, I was.
Mr. Andrew, I believe, is out there, yeah?
Yeah. And this is just kind of more a procedural question more than anything. If I could find 6.4 that I had highlighted my notes.
Depending on the nature of your question, you've got a menu of staff to choose from, so.
That, I was just curious on the, the critical drainage area and the special requirements that were put in place in 1997 on that. Looks like it was, normally is that, is that drainage analysis required prior to the issuing of the conditional use permit? Because I do notice that it said here that they passed it 7-0, subject to having an analysis done. And my question is this, is that is there any impact on the area of the developable, developable area based on a drain, detention ponds, prior to, prior to the way it was done here? Like if, if you're looking at the overall and you say, okay, this, this amount of space is going to be required for, set aside for drainage, does that affect the coverage area on the overall lot and/or any landscaping requirements or anything like that? Does that?
In this case, it was kind of a chicken and egg thing. The ordinance ties it to building permits because you could have situations where uses are permitted by right, and then the drainage analysis is submitted with the building permit. It would be the applicant's discretion, and it would probably be prudent for site layout purposes to do the drainage analysis with the conditional use permit, which is looking at, at the site plan. However, when we looked at it, the footprint of the building and all was comparable to what you would have had with a good-sized townhome in, in the same location. So it was not anticipated that there would be a great deal of detention needs like you would have for a church that might have a large parking lot and a large building. But the requirement is tied to the issuance of, of building permits. And so certainly an applicant, if they wanted to be prudent and get out ahead of the curve, would, could do that as part of their conditional use permit application. Here, the, most of the hearing was devoted to whether the preschool use should be permitted in this location at all, and that was the first question. Then the details of the, of the plan were, were kind of secondary. So the real focus of the Planning Commission was evaluating the use itself and the suitability of the location for a preschool. And then the details were dwelled into when the building permit plans came in.
Okay, now, as, as part of that discussion as to the impact, so to speak, of, of that use on that area, was it, was there concern from the, I take it a number of residents probably expressed that type of concern as well, or?
There were some neighbors of townhomes to the west who were concerned and didn't think that that was an appropriate place for a preschool. Not so much the impact on them, but they thought it was not a suitable location. And there were others who thought it was a very suitable location because of the proximity to Oxbow Park.
Okay.
So there were kind of two competing views.
And then just to kind of bring this back to the detention basins and so on, is that, is the location and sites of these and these easements and so on, do those impact at all any sort of ability for them to make this kind of, the landscaping mesh with the existing residential nature of that, of that neighborhood? Are they, is it going to look residential or is it going to look like?
It's still going to look residential, and the ponds will be fairly modestly sized. When they're dry, they won't particularly be noticeable, and they're not located in a, the area behind the preschool on the west and on the south is going to be their activity area for outdoor activities. Larger activities will go across the street to the park, but neither of these detention ponds have any impact whatsoever on their ability to use space. They're both, that's actually why they're located in the front yard, and they're actually going to be very shallow and not that noticeable.
Okay.
If I may add to the strategic or the timing question, in a more general sense, not necessarily specific to this project, you're right in thinking that, you know, the, the runoff calculation may determine the size of the detention basin, but there are instances where, that's all on the assumption of gravity flow. There's, there are instances where they've come up with a solution to pump to minimize the footprint. And then additionally, there really is kind of a strategic decision on the part of the applicant, whether they want to know conceptually whether what they have in mind is going to get approval, and they'll deal with design and design cost later, or whether they want to do the design on the front end. We don't currently dictate to them the timing of that. We try to work with them, whichever is their preference.
Okay. Well, and to that, my, the first part of my question was whether you're using that as landscaped area or detention area, does it count the same when you're figuring out lot coverage and developable square footage?
Well, in terms of the, the lot coverage, that's associated with structures, not necessarily the detention basin or the landscaping area, if that's your question.
Well, I think what he's trying to say is if there's 8,000 square foot and 4,000 square foot of, of that lot is a drainage easement, do you now count it as a 4,000-foot lot, or is this still an 8,000-foot lot?
Maybe the easiest way to answer that would, it'd be to state, what is the criteria for determining the amount of landscaping that a property like that would have to have?
In this case, it's based on the, both the, the parking lot, because it's fewer than six spaces, does not have to have landscaping. Doesn't have to be screened because it only has three parking spaces. And so that is below the threshold for parking lot screening. However, the frontage that it has on the two streets, McAdams and Faith Drive, determine the amount of green space and the number of tree units that they have to have.
Okay.
And they, they did not get any relief from any of those. The only difference is we don't allow trees to be placed in detention basins, so they have to landscape around the basin, which they have done in this case.
Right, okay.
So you are correct, but as Mr. Skreggs says, there's a certain level of additional expense getting into the, the technical aspects of a drainage study. And if Montessori's conditional use permit had not been approved, then they would have been, had done a very detailed drainage study for a site that they couldn't use. So they made the strategic decision to see if they could get the location approved and then got into the details after they knew the location was approved.
Very good.
This dates, it's hard to believe, but it dates to a time when the number one issue the City Commission was dealing with was flooding and flooded streets in this neighborhood. And we don't, we're not experiencing that.
As much.
But that is the origin of the critical drainage area. There was ongoing flooding in this neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Since we've opened this up, is there anyone from the public who wants to comment on this? Okay, seen none. I'll bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Once again, Mayor, I move that we accept the offered drainage easement dedications for the detention basin serving the Salina-Montessori preschool.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the public drainage easement dedications on Lot 1 in East 35, point 37 foot of Lot 2, Block 9, in the Meyer addition of City of Salina. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and that's going to move us on to administration.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 14-7140, designating the city manager as a local Freedom of Information Officer for the city of Salina in accordance with KSA 45-226, and repealing Resolution Number 03-5996.
Hey, there you go. Is this your first time? No, it's your second.
I've been here before.
Yeah, I go this old school to you now.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor.
I didn't know if we had to ring like a special thing, but I thought you'd been up once before.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We're bringing this resolution before you today because Kansas statutes require that the city designate a freedom, local Freedom of Information Officer. And before this, it had been a specific person, and we wanted to make it to where it was the city manager, and he can designate people under him. And so the staff recommends that you guys adopt Resolution 147140.
Any questions for staff on this?
Who's the existing?
It was the previous city clerk, Luanne Elsie.
Oh, okay. Are you, are you willing to take on this responsibility?
As long as I can delegate, yes.
No, no, no increase in pay is required on this? Okay, okay. We don't have to buy a stamp or anything? No expenses? Oh, this is a shoo-in?
Is there any kind of educational requirement or that's required for this process?
Just to be familiar with the statutes and what the rules are and.
So any person that is designated would need to know all the rules and regulations?
Yes.
Yeah. Typically, and I don't see any change in how we would apply, it would fall to the city clerk or someone in that office. So I think the theme is going to be the same. Certainly, that person has the whole office and legal counsel at their disposal if they have a real difficult question on a, on a records question or records issue, and we offer that up and always try to make the right decision.
Great. Thank you. Anyone in the public care to comment on this? Okay. Bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 14-7140, designating the city manager as the local Freedom of Information Officer for the city of Salina in accordance with KSA 45-226, and repealing Resolution Number 03-5996.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt Resolution Number 14-7140. Is any further discussion? Seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, First Reading Ordinance Number 14-10754, levying special assessments against a certain lot and piece of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Second, second performance.
Thank you again.
Just looking to make sure my name's not on the list here. Hold on.
Only two.
There's only two.
This is a, a certain piece of property that had a significant amount of an abatement that was performed on it, and it was also subject to foreclosure, so we wanted to bring this before the commission to get certified.
Any questions for staff on this?
What, is this on, is this, is this on North 9th?
That would be correct, yes, sir.
It's your Five Corners project.
Yeah. No, they're our project, isn't it? I pulled the weeds there.
It looks pretty good, doesn't it?
All right, this, when was this, when was this work done, this cleanup done?
It was done this summer since our last certification, so it was July and August.
Was it all, was it weeds, or was it garbage and weeds and the whole thing, or what, what was the nature of it? I'm looking at you, Mr. Haw, because I figured.
The whole thing would be the answer. We'd have weeds and overgrowth, vegetation overgrowth. We also had trash and debris. We also had some boarding of some windows and doors.
Okay.
Is this an unoccupied property?
It is an unoccupied property. There are no utilities to this property at this particular time.
Following up, so this is currently in foreclosure from a bank or mortgage company or holding company of some sort, you're saying, at this time as well?
I think they're subject to proceedings for foreclosure, so.
Okay, okay. So we're trying to get, and get our money while it's.
Yeah, Commissioners, typically it would, it would fall into the cycle, but with the anticipation of the foreclosure proceeding, we felt it was best to get it out in front from a timing perspective.
Sure, yeah, yeah, right on. Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this issue? Nope. Okay. I'll bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the first reading of ordinance Number 14-10754, levying special.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Keep going.
Finish.
Oh, okay.
I was going to second it, but go ahead.
Okay, special assessments against a certain lot and piece of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt on first reading ordinance Number 14-10754. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to Agreement for Construction of Municipal Solid Waste Landfill, Cell 19, City Project Number 14-3022.
Mr. Stack?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We've had good success and good progress on our Cell 19 construction this year with Spore Land Development Company. However, they were not able to meet the substantial completion deadline of September 20th, and have asked for some relief of the liquidated damages associated with that. And says that we will still make this substantial completion by October 20th, and has requested some modifications thereof. They have made, like I said, good progress. They started later than they had hoped. No great excuses really for it, other than they just say, they have really got a lot of people out there working to get it completed, and asked for some forgiveness basically in this case. So the criteria here would basically amend the contract, the amendment, amends the contract where they don't get charged $1,500 a day in liquidated damages if they're able to complete it by October 20th. So that is the change, basically. Everything else stays the same, if they don't get it completed by, I was trying to figure this out today, but basically we have a substantial completion, which helps us for our KDHE submittal. But then we've got final completion, which is extra items that aren't pertinent related to the KDHE submittal. And so some fencing, some roadworks, some gravelling, seeding, mulching, those type of things, KDHE will, isn't as concerned or interested in those. Actually, they're interested in the landfill, the leachate lines, and the unleachate pond. So that is the items that are part of the substantial completion, and they should have those finished by, we're thinking by the middle of next week. I mean, they were hoping to have them done this week, but a few rain days last week, and then actually a bunch the week before, so that was a bummer for a four-and-a-half-inch rain out there. Really, really hurt them. But bottom line is, they still should finish by the 20th or before, so that's a good thing. The final completion will be a challenge for them to make the 20th, so they won't, there's some things that they may have trouble completing on that date. However, the damages are only $750 a day, which principle of it really hurts them more than the money. But $750 a day, if they, you know, complete it two days after the 20th, well, it's not a lot of money. But they're going to be talking about weather days, which are a part of the contract, so we should be able to work out with them anything, the final completion items after the 20th, if that even becomes an issue. So this is, this is, this amendment is mostly for, it's, it's all for the, for the substantial completion. And those were the, the larger items, or the larger $1,500 a day, that were quite a heftier item for them in this case. So I hope I've explained this. We've talked about this with staff quite a bit. It's not something we, you know, we have the deadlines in there for a reason, and they clearly didn't make them, but we felt like, okay, they, we can, they can ask the question, and for, if we make this October 20th date, we're still in pretty good shape.
Commissioners, real quick, the, the trade-off, too, I think Dan may have mentioned, is that retainage.
Oh, yes.
That's really the trade-off.
Right, right.
I think as we look forward with some of our future contracts, we, we may, we're going to have some serious conversations about emphasis on liquidated damages versus emphasis on retainage. If you talk to the legal folks, they'll say it's a lot easier to retain money than it is to go after it. And so you'll see in the, in the report that the retainage was at 10%, and then when you get to substantial completion, it gets cut in half, so in essence it's 5%. In this case, it's 20%, and it's there until the full completion, with the exception just of the, the, the grass aspect, the seeding and fertilizing and so forth. We don't want them to do that now because we're getting so late in the season, we won't get the full benefits. We actually want them to do that part in the spring. But, so we can still close them out with, except for that one piece, but we'll hold 20% until the project's all complete, except for that seeding, mulching, and that type of work. So they have a much bigger burden actually on their back by the retainage we're holding to get this finished than they did probably even before.
Mr. Gage? The retainage.
Mr. Gates, the retainage is increased whether they are significantly finished by the 20th or not?
Correct.
Yes.
It is, yes. And that is more of a financial hit on them until they actually get it completed, so that is a good point Jason's raising.
Part of the reason to have the completion date the way it is is so that the seed could be, would germinate and continue to mature over the winter, so that if that is delayed until the spring, does that mean that to have a good landscape project, then you switch the seed over to like a warm-weather seed, or how is that accomplished?
Well, I mean, it's a good point, because it'd be better to have it in the fall and have the winter to grow strong root structure, and then it would survive better in the spring and summer. There is a spring seeding season that is per contracts and legal, and a lot of times you have to plant grass in the spring, so it's not as ideal, I guess, as fall, but you can plant grass earlier in the spring, and then when the ground actually warms up for it to germinate, that is, it germinates early as possible, basically, and so then it has a few months to do okay, basically. Their idea is they're gonna wanna still, they actually still wanna seed in a couple weeks. You know, at this point, typically, you have to see the grass grow and measure how much grass is there before you pay for it. So they can do that, it's their own risk. We don't think a lot of it's gonna come up, and then they'll have to come back in the spring, basically, and seed again, or see whatever didn't come up. But we wanted to hold back the money, for sure, to make sure that it happens, and to make sure we have to get them back here in the spring. Really don't wanna leave it all winter without seed, anyway. So there's some erosion control, there's some other items we have in here as part of the contract originally, to make sure we don't have a bunch of erosion, and we deal with any areas that don't get a good seed establishment. But that was a good point, because that was the reason we want projects done in late September, because that's when the seeding season ends around here.
So initially, we had the 145 and 175 calendar days for substantial and final completion respectively.
Correct.
Are we changing what is substantial completion and what is final completion? Because what it sounds like is that we're now calling final completion, or are we still calling final completion everything except for seeding and sodding?
Correct.
I mean, and they're expecting to get all of that done by October 20th?
20th, yep. Yeah, they're not, we're not asking for any forgiveness on them on final completion at this point, only on substantial.
Okay, and then...
And I guess you're right. Outside of the seeding is definitely something we're asking for forgiveness on till spring, but other than that, they have to have everything done on October 20th, which I frankly don't think they're gonna make, but they'll have at least substantial completion, which we really care about. That's the main part that we're concerned with.
Well, how many, well, a couple things. First of all, is how many days do we anticipate that they're gonna request for weather days? I mean, what's our real date? If it's not October 20th, what's our...
There are no weather days, are there?
What's that?
Are there weather days? Outside the norm. And so for October, we've had outside the norm, so they'll probably request some.
So maybe five days?
Exactly. That's what he asked for today, was I think three and a half plus one and a half, that's what they've counted up so far, so yeah, five days is what it's looking like thus far.
So we're talking about the 25th?
Correct.
And so how does the moving from the 10 to 20% retainage work if they don't, and how does retroactively putting the liquidated damages if they don't get this done by the 25th?
Well, the retro liquidated damages are only for substantial completion, so that's that part I think where everybody's good on. There's no, the final completion is the 750, and that just starts accruing on October 20th or October 25th, whatever date we end up with on weather days.
Right, but I mean, if we say we would be looking to forgive liquidated damages from the 20th of September to the 20th of October...
Right, for substantial, right.
For substantial, because they say, well, we're not gonna hit substantial, but we're gonna, we'll have everything done for final completion.
Right.
Now, it looks like we're just moving instead of saying, okay, that can be forgiven if final completion is hit, because we're caught up. But if all we're doing is moving substantial completion from September 20th to October 20th, I don't know what we're really accomplishing as far as making sure that they're caught up. What, does that make sense? It seems like we're...
Yeah, it does, and I guess, yeah, really, the larger retainage is a major incentive for them, and that actually gets retained until the next month. Basically, the pay dates are from, say, September 15th, October 15th, that's about, it's a monthly payment system, and so on October 15th, we'll see what work is done and pay them for it, but they'll have to withhold 20% of that at that point.
Yeah, that's the point, Commissioners. Remember, whether it's the 20th or 25th, wherever the weather days work at under the contract, the fact is, is we're gonna be holding on to not 5% like under the original agreement.
Right.
We're holding on to 20% until it's fully complete, except for the seeding and mulching.
Correct.
So they have a pretty big incentive to get the final completion done as quickly as possible.
That's what, $2.2 million project, so it's $440,000 we'll be holding until it's actually complete, so it's somewhat of a hit for them, and it's somewhat of an encouragement to get it done by October 20th.
Yeah.
We hope they make that date, but I wanna be frank here and say, it's gonna be a struggle for them to make it.
Right, but I mean, they're not coming in and saying, will you waive the liquidated damages because we're gonna be caught up on this date? There's, I don't know if you're tracking, and maybe I'm not making it clear enough, it just seems like, because I'm perfectly okay with saying, yeah, give them time to catch up if it's the 25th, if it's the whatever. Is it clearly defined there at what point they're out of the woods with these liquidated damages? Does that make sense? It's like, or do we let it just...
Is your question whether or not the weather days affect the date that they need to be substantially complete? Because that's what, the substantial completion obviously affects the liquidated, the higher number of liquidated damages, the 1,500 per day. So is your question, Commissioner, I wanna make sure I understand it, is it, for example, the scenario of, let's say that there are five weather days, and those are for the whole project, but substantial completion today is, or under this would be October 20th, but let's say that the final completion date moves, because October 20th matches up with the original final completion date. Correct? Is that correct, Dan?
Right.
Okay. So let's say the final completion date moves from October 20th to the 25th, just simply due to the weather days. Is your question whether the substantial completion date also moves to the 25th?
My question is more, that's not really what I'm getting at. I'm getting at more of, we have a September 20th and an October 20th for substantial and final, and I probably confuse things by throwing in the weather days. And then with this agreement, the only, in looking through the packet and the contract, the amendment, the only other date I see in there is April 15th, 2015. So my question is more of, have we established a date for final completion? Because, like I said, I'm willing to say, if we have a date that you're gonna be final completion, with the exception of the seed, but you mentioned a number of things, gravel and other things that constitute final completion, I just wanna be sure that the only thing that's left outstanding is things that can't be accomplished because of the weather, and that is seeding, or sodding, or mulching, or whatever it is. And so those are the only dates I see there, so I just don't wanna be caught in a situation now where they say, well, we don't have to worry about the liquidated $1,500 a day damage, we're now into $750 a day damage.
Right.
We can afford 750 a day, and it just drags on that way, because if they're waiting till April 15th for the retainage, then they're gonna be waiting for that anyway.
Yep.
So it doesn't encourage them to get this done on October 25th versus November 25th.
The retainage is the big hammer we have.
Yeah, my understanding, I'll kinda try to say it and see if these guys are nodding this way, or uh-uh. My understanding is, is the way this is written, is that, well, originally, they needed to get substantial completion by September 20th and final completion by October 20th, and originally, there is a 10%, just a typical 10% retainage all the way to final completion, and then, or I'm sorry, a substantial, yeah, I'm sorry, a final completion, and liquidated, if they don't meet substantial completion, we're 1,500 a day, but between substantial and final, they drop to 750 per day.
Correct.
So with the change in this, and this contract language does not appear to address moving substantial completion date based on weather days, unless I'm misinterpreting it, it appears to be very clear, October 20th is the day now for substantial completion period. That's the first thing I'm looking at, our legal counsel and Dan, because we don't make reference to weather days on the substantial completion date.
Correct.
So is that a proper interpretation?
Yeah, there is no, the October 20th date is firm.
Regardless of weather...
Regardless, they had plenty of time to get done, and if they have a weather day from here on out, and they don't finish that, it's, I mean, it's their own fault.
So regardless of weather, if they do not hit substantial completion, and I will say, substantial completion would satisfy KDHE.
Correct.
That's really important.
That's the main issue.
To get KDHE's approval, so keep that in mind. But if they don't hit substantial completion by October 20th, they will incur all the $1,500 value of liquidated damages for every day, starting on September 20th, all the way until they hit substantial completion, whether it's October 21st, or whether it's November, or whenever. That comes into play, so they would have a double whammy, really, well, yeah, a double whammy of the retro on all the liquidated damages up until they hit substantial completion, and the retainage of 20% still in place. There's a really good reason for them to hit substantial completion by the 20th. So let's say that they do meet substantial completion on October 20th. Then the question's final completion. Well, again, substantial completion satisfies KDHE, so we've got, really, a majority of this is completed. Now, we want final completion to happen very soon, too, because if they don't hit the final completion on October 20th, plus whatever the agreed-upon weather days are, they're into the 750, $750 per day liquidated damages, and it's lower than it would be at 1,500, but we are still holding 20% of their pay. And what that means is, is typically with construction projects, they don't like, contractors don't like to dip into savings to pay the people they owe money to, subcontractors and so forth, or their employees, so they really like, they really rely on that cash flow in and pay out. Now, we don't care about that, because we're dealing with one entity, but that's how they like to see it. Money in, money out, money in, money out, not no money in and money out. So if we hold 20% too long, that puts a hurt on the contractor, and that will happen if they don't hit the final completion date really as quickly as possible. So there should be, I believe, there's a really, there's a tremendous incentive to hit substantial completion by October 20th, and there's a very, very high incentive for them to get final completion just as quickly as they can afterwards. I really think that because of the retainage...
So in essence, we are extending the substantial completion day by a month?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, but if they don't, if they don't hit it...
It's retro.
It's all retro on the cost, and we still have the 20% retainage.
If they don't hit the original substantial completion, now is the original...
The final, the October 20th date.
Yeah, the original September 20th.
Well, right, but I'm saying that on October 20th, all they have to satisfy is our original definition of substantial completion.
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, and then you had mentioned, they said that they think they can reach final completion by October 20th, with the exception of the seeding and mulching?
That was their original, original idea, was they were gonna have the whole thing done by October 20th.
Right, but I mean, recently, they're thinking as...
Well, that's why we have the rain days now, so they're asking.
Okay, but they're thinking with those five other days, that there's a good chance that they feel like they can reach final completion, with the exception of the seeding and mulching.
Yeah, but we are gonna have to work out some rain days over the last month with them, that they may, they'll request a few extra days.
Those are called for, if those are part of the contract, so you deal with those regardless of whether they started later or not.
Those don't have to come back to you all for that.
Okay, and then probably the most important question, how does this affect, timing-wise, our utilization of that cell? I mean, were we, was it, is it delayed going online for any...
The seeding part wouldn't affect it.
No.
I would have to defer to these guys on the, if you could start after substantial completion versus final completion, but I don't know.
So we don't have any incurred expenses by not having it available to use?
One thing I could probably say is that the cell five that we're using currently, that can probably stay in business until about May or June, so we can still actively use that cell. So a little bit of a delay right now is not gonna cause us a problem. Once we get the okay from KDHE with the quality assurance testing and procedure report that we submit, is it, then it's gonna take about four months to be able to put in a buffer layer, or what we call fluff layer, of loose trash on top of that for about four foot. Then we can start putting additional trash in there of any type. But I guess, to answer your question specifically, is we're not gonna need to be able to move out of where we're at right now until like May or June of 2015.
So we'll be hitting it pretty close, then?
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll be fine.
One thing I failed to mention, too, item four, just to clarify, we do put another requirement on final payment. We have to get KDHE approval, so that helps, that's another hammer that we have. If KDHE comes back for some reason and says you did this wrong, or we don't like this, well, then they have to fix it, basically. So it helps, we have quite a bit of leverage now that we don't normally have under, so we feel like we have given them a break to a certain extent, or some forgiveness, but we've increased the hammer and actually withheld more money. Ultimately, they should be whole at the end, but there are some, a lot more requirements than is normal under a contract for this, of this size.
Did you say we retain the final payment until after the seeding is completed?
No, just KDHE approval occurs.
So they could skip the country after...
We're withholding $15,000 bucks, no matter what, till April. I mean, that's also is part of this.
If they...
That's just for seeding.
If they did not get KDHE approval, let's say they skipped the country, and that's a good contractor, they're not gonna do that, but if they did, theoretically, we're holding on to 20%.
Not a lot of money. Well, we're holding on 20%, but not until April.
No, no, I guess I did, I do wanna clarify that, we're not holding on to all their money for six more months, that's not sure.
Is the retainage until after the seeding is completed?
No.
We're only holding on to $15,000.
15 is associated specifically to the seeding.
But that's after they get done with...
Everything else has to be done to close out with the rest of the project, everything. Final completion, except the seeding, and that's only because we feel like it's not, it may not be worth it to seed this time of year. Now, if they wanna try it and show us different, that's fine, they can try that.
Just kinda looking at the SCS Aquaterra, which is, I guess, our quality control group?
Correct.
And of course, we have to pass KDHE.
Right.
What percentage of these things go back and say, well, you're gonna need to go remedy this little thing that's...
It hasn't happened before. It's, we've, KDHE was out there today, looking at the site, they do periodic...
So everything's kind of good?
Looking good, yeah, so far, so good, but we, you know, there's always a chance that they come back with something, some picture, that, you know, that's an obscure issue, we gotta fix that, it's probably not a big deal, but it's just something we, we felt like, the whole point of the two completion dates, the intent of that is still met here. We're holding on to their money until we get KDHE approval, that was the intent all along, to, 30 days is about how long it takes KDHE to approve something, and so if we'd have been done on September 20th, we'd know by October 20th if we had any issues. Well, now we don't, you know, now if they got it all done by October 20th, and they skipped town and we paid them, we wanna make sure we have KDHE approval prior to them, prior to us paying them, really, that's the bottom line.
This is a different contractor than we had the last time we had a cell, and you may recall, you know, in times past, you can run into quality issues, and we have seen that, there's no, at this point, with this contractor, we're not running into quality issues, which is a very, very good thing. It's just a matter of slow start now, getting it finished, so we really don't anticipate any issues with the quality side, and with KDHE monitoring in an ongoing basis, we wouldn't, we don't expect to be overly surprised by a big issue with them. So that's probably the best part of the project, it's just a matter of getting finished up.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, at an appropriate time, a quick comment.
It's always, I'm just, I'm gonna ask if we can take the money if they don't finish and take our own skip-the-country vacation here, because I'm earning my $300 bucks this month, I'm telling you. We're talking trash here.
Aaron or Greg, are you speaking for Aaron, or do you want him to speak as well?
Well, I had a quick point, and then going to see, if I may, that on the liquidated damages concept, it's important to keep in mind that by virtue of any delay, we are damaged. I mean, there are different ways, and that's the point of the liquidated, it is utilized when it is difficult to calculate precisely what those damages might be, and that's what when it is difficult to calculate precisely what those damages might be, and that's what prompts the use of just a liquidated sum, agreed upon in advance. So while, appreciate the particulars, and hopefully we're not in too tight a situation, but we do need to not get away from the concept that because they are late, there are still damages and consequences that we wish to avoid and believe justify the liquidated damages if they don't meet these even revised deadlines. The other question I had, and wanted to be sure with the discussion that has occurred, Aaron Martin had taken care of the work on the drafting of the amendment, and I just wanted to be sure, Aaron, if the discussion prompted you to think that there was a need for any modification of any of the language, or if, if the discussion is consistent with...
Okay, on, on the issue of weather, potential weather delays, the proposed amendment does not discuss weather delays, it does not contemplate them, and the one thing that I wanted to note was, in the construction general conditions, as they are currently written, and as are unmodified by this proposed amendment, there is a formula which allows for potential extensions due to unreasonable weather delays. And I don't have it here in front of me, but it, it's a relatively high threshold that involves looking at more than just one day when it rained, and it requires the contractor to come forward with a 30-day window, and compare that to a five-year historical average to show that we have greatly exceeded the average rainfall during that window, and then we start adding on days. So I, I don't believe that any change orders have been issued yet to change the contract times due to weather. That could certainly happen if there were unusual rainfall for the next 20 days.
Yeah, be careful, last time that conversation was had, any.
Yeah, I was just looking here, the next seven days it's supposed to rain five times. I'm just, I was thinking about building an ark.
So, I, I just wanted to note that although it says October 20th is the deadline for substantial completion, as it's currently written, that would allow for the contractor to potentially come forward and demonstrate the need for additional days if it, if it satisfies that formula. If, if you do not wish for that to happen, then we could amend, amend this so that no additional extensions are granted, whether.
I think it's a tough sell when you say, some of these rain days occurred after we had already missed our substantial completion date.
That's exactly right.
So, yeah, so, I mean, I think that we're probably, I, I think we're probably fairly good on that, on that part of it, so.
If I may, is it fair to say that if I'm understanding the objective of the commission correctly, that that, that you want that October 20th to stay fixed with regard to substantial completion? And is it fair to say, given that, Aaron, that you might wish to make, interject that statement in the, in the language to make doubly clear, so that the contractor has no reason to have any expectation that that's a, in any way adjustable by virtue of rain days?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate and necessary if we do not wish to allow for any future changes due to weather, to add, add a sentence or two in there explaining that this is the date for substantial and final completion regardless of past or future weather between now and that date.
But the, presumably then, however, that the final date, final completion date would be subject to the current contract terms as far as the potential influence of those extraordinary rain days, is, is that a fair statement?
Right, so they may move their 750 a day liquidated damages back five days.
Right.
Just, just to be clear, though, with regards to the weather days, if the contract currently anticipates weather days for the substantial completion date, if there are, and Dan, you could probably tell us, if there are any weather days that occurred prior to September 20th, they're entitled to those, I would expect.
Above the norm, though.
Above, yeah, well, that meets the definition, and, yeah.
This summer, there was not above normal precipitation.
So we don't think there are any weather days owed from September 20th prior? Okay, well, that helps clarify that, because if there were that met the requirements, and they would need to be entitled to those, it's really anything after September 20th, which is really in question. So we can make the language changes and make that clear. Do that as, if you approve this, approve it with the, in the motion with that language change, you could do that.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for staff, any further? All right, thanks, guys. While he's maybe formulating a motion there and looking things over, anyone from the public? No? Wow. Anyway, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to Agreement for Construction of Municipal Solid Waste Landfill Cell 19, City Project Number 14-3022.
Do we need to add?
What the.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful if, and I think just simply put, if, if this is consistent with your wish, would be that the language make abundantly clear that the modification of the substantial completion date of, to October 20th, is not subject to any modification on the basis of rain days, and that the ultimate determination of the final completion date is subject to the current contract terms as far as any adjustment for rain days. Is that a fair statement?
That's square.
That is good.
Second. Motion is second to authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Agreement of Construction of Municipal Solid Waste Landfill Facility 19, City Project Number 14-3022. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That moves us. Thanks, guys. That moves us on to.
Item 8.1, Application PDD 04-5A, filed by Quick Shop Inc., requesting approval of an amendment to the architectural restrictions adopted as part of the preliminary development plan and plan development district ordinance for the Georgetown Village Place PDD located at the northeast corner of Fairdale Road and Crawford Street, applicable to the Quick Shop convenience store located at 657 Fairdale Road.
All right, Mr. Andrew.
I'm going to see if I can successfully explain why the Quick Shop store at Fairdale and Crawford looks the way it does today.
Good luck.
John, if you could start out with that, that timeline list, we have to go back to multiple, multiple public hearings that were held back in 1976, and the proposal at the time was to construct what was to be known as the Georgetown Village Place Shopping Center at the corner of Fairdale and Crawford, and also bordered by Georgetown on the east. And this was the first commercial zoning of any kind proposed, east of the river, and the, even the residential area at that time was not all that fully built out, so it was given careful scrutiny. And as part of that, there was an ordinance approved for a planned development district. And again, the distinction between planned development districts and conventional zoning is that planned development districts, when there's a zoning change, there's usually a specific development plan that's incorporated as part of that, and that development plan usually involves a site plan and can involve building elevations. So if you could go to slide five, John, this is what the planning, or, Planning Commission and City Commission were shown in terms of the approved exterior design, or in other words, if you approve my shopping center, the, the buildings will contain these architectural features. And someone at the time may have possibly been a planner, may have been a city attorney at the time, tried to take that picture and incorporate it into conditions in the ordinance. And so, John, if you could go to the, what's referred to as the Etherington letter, and scroll so you can get a little farther down, this is a letter from the developer, and he's basically stating that he is aware of the condition that was placed on them at the City Commission meeting, and is accepting the conditions, and just reading back that it's his understanding, and this was in the motion, not the ordinance, but this is fairly unusual, that the Planning Commission be directed to carefully scrutinize the final plans and insist that Mr. Etherington substantially comply with the architectural renderings that have been presented and shown to us and were submitted with the preliminary plans. And so, as Mr. Banks can testify, Mr. Etherington did not have the highest trust factor with boards and commissions at that time, so this, they wanted it carefully locked down, and they wanted something in writing back from Mr. Etherington that he was accepting those conditions. So John, if you could go back to our timeline. So the planning of a planned development district is a two-step process. The first step is a public hearing before the Planning Commission, a recommendation that goes to the City Commission, there's an ordinance that sets out all the development parameters, and in most cases, a final, more refined development plan goes back, but it goes back to the Planning Commission only. And then, John, if you could go back down just a little bit so we could see that, you know, the other direction. The total area at, for the development was a little over seven acres, there was 35,000 square feet of commercial space proposed, and the plan had 234 spaces. That was acted on in 1978. 1979, the first building permit for this center was issued, and that was for Quick Shop. And their plans were determined to be consistent with the approved final development plan and those stipulations. So, John, could you go to the approved site plan for Quick Shop? So this is what you see there today, this was the specific plan that was reviewed by the Planning Commission in 1978, and was part of the 1979 building permit. And then, these are going to be very difficult to see, but if you could try the black and white photos, John. These photos were taken by staff to document that.
Gas prices.
That they had, in fact.
We promised to lift the restrictions if they'll make gas 99 cents.
So this, this was intended to document that Quick Shop had, in fact, conformed with those architectural restrictions as it relates to their wood shake shingles and their mancered roof overhang. So that, that takes us to 1979. Now, if it's back to the timeline, please, John. First change occurred in 1993, realizing that Quick Shop's out there by itself, the developer sliced off the north 105 feet, and that was developed with townhomes along the south side of Village Lane, which shrunk the shopping center site because the north 105 feet became a, a townhome development. And, John, do you wanna show, that would be the amended development plan, which is four? So the Planning Commission, City Commission approved this plan, this is what was left of it, we had the townhomes here, we had these multiple commercial buildings yet unbuilt, and we had Quick Shop sitting here by itself with its mancered roof and wood shake shingles. Okay, John, back to the timeline. 1995, there was a complaint received from someone who was knowledgeable of the restrictions, that they were in the process of removing the shingles and some of the wood mancered, and they were stopped by city staff, and they said, "Well, since we've gotten this far, we would just like to request to make these architectural restrictions go away." So they filed that request, it was a public hearing before the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission denied their request, saying that they wanted to see what the balance of the property was gonna develop with before such a decision was made, and they withdrew their request. 2004, they tried again, but they were mostly concerned with their gas canopy and their signage. That amendment was approved, but the language about the architectural elements was retained in that 2004 ordinance. Then 2005, we had the Booker Willis Ratliff, now Lochner Building, final plan for it, and a building permit, and then 2009 was a request to come in and eliminate the shopping center and substitute a townhome development in the center of the block. And John, I think it's slide 17, is the preliminary plat, and these are all in your packet, but just for reference purposes. This is essentially the new layout with, you had the existing townhomes on Village Lane, a new street in here, cluster of townhomes, here is the Lochner Booker Willis Ratliff Building, here's a vacant tract, and here's Quick Shop here. So at this point, all this is built out, this has got an office, this is vacant, and here is Quick Shop. Which brings us to 2014. The representatives, the, the real estate people at Quick Shop have long memories, and they knew that these restrictions requiring the maintenance of the wood shake shingles and the mancered roof were still in place, and they expressed a desire to remove all the wood shake shingles and replace them with asphalt shingles and dispense with the wooden mancered, which brought us to their application, and to a application that resulted in a public hearing before the Planning Commission. There were no neighboring owners in the vicinity that appeared at that hearing, and the arguments from Quick Shop is that we were required to have this so that we would blend in with the surrounding shopping center, and now there's no shopping center for us to blend in with, so they really don't serve their purpose. And so, their justification was that the, with the townhome development has eliminated all possibility that the shopping center will ever be developed, and there's, there's no architectural theme for them to be compatible with, and so they asked that the, those remaining language or conditions that required this mancered and these wood shake shingles be repealed. So the Planning Commission reviewed that and made a motion to recommend approval to lift all the remaining architectural restrictions and allow the proposed facade and roof changes. They found that the architectural restrictions no longer serve their original purpose. So essentially, we are presenting you with four options, one of which would be to concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve Quick Shop's request. That would allow these features to be peeled off the building, but everything else, and replaced with asphalt shingles, but everything else would remain the same. This is still a planned development district, that's not changing that status, so if they were to do a major addition, or reconfiguration, or redevelopment of this, they would still be coming back before public bodies to get approval of that, they can't just go out and change the building, or tear it down, or add on, they are still subject to the site plan that the Planning Commission approved in 1978. The specific things that they are requesting relate to the special architectural restrictions that go with the shopping center. You could approve an amendment that repeals those restrictions just to the roof related to the shingles and the mancered, but retain architectural controls on the store building itself. That is not the ordinance that is before you, but if that's the direction you wanted to go, then we would need to probably be specific as to what elements you wanted to continue to regulate, and then that can be articulated in the ordinance. A third option would be to return this to the Planning Commission for consideration of some alternative other than removal and replacement with wood shake shingles, or you could overturn the Planning Commission's recommendation and leave all the original architectural restrictions in place, basically denying Quick Shop's request, and that would require four votes to do it at today's meeting. So the ordinance that is before you is based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and it would essentially repeal that language. and it would essentially repeal that language. And, John, I'm trying to figure out where, I guess it'd be the, what you've got, the Georgetown ordinance PDF. And it's, yeah, it's the, you've got it listed separately, so if you could go to the second It is not very artful language, but it is from the original, and it is carried over through all those changes that I have described, is these two provisions right here, that property developed in accordance with the architectural renderings presented with the preliminary development plan, again, referring back to the 76 ordinance. And then, the final plans and buildings contain the wood beams, brick construction, brick sidewalks, attractive lighting, shrubs and plantings. And again, this language is more designed to cover the layout of the whole shopping center, but it is nonetheless still in place. And as we interpret it, it, as long as it's in place, Quick Shop cannot remove the wood shake shingles and the wood mancered, and they've got to live with that unless that language is taken out of the ordinance. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about your options.
Any questions for staff?
I have, uh, we see what they want to get rid of because, and, and, and that's understandable. They didn't, none of it developed out like they thought it would, so they're not worried about matching future buildings and with the, with the design theme or whatever, but-
And they're not, they're not, there are no other wood shake shingles up in that area, and they don't view that as a desirable product for their stores.
Right. And so, are they looking also to get rid of the mancered style roof too, or what's their-
That would be, if, if they were allowed to resurface that, they would probably, their, their request would be to, to be able to remove the mancered with the wood beams and all of that as well. So, basically, you would still have that shape of roof, but it would have asphalt single, shingles, and we not have this, these wood beams and everything out there.
Okay. So, it's basically just changing the roofing material and, and a few other things out front. I mean, it's, my only concern is, is that at the time, it was, the building was designed to, and the landscaping, to reflect what a, a commercial type use. Now that it's developed mostly residential, is, my only concern is, is that it blend in with the residential nature of the, of that area versus, uh, versus a commercial. So, I don't have a problem with going from wood shakes to asphalt. Is there anything in place? Is all the landscaping that was required on the PDD in place? I noticed that there's an awful lot of gravel around there now, and-
It was not, but as part of the action in, in 1995, it was all planted or replanted and inspected. As you can see, this, this is not in perfect health, but all of the plantings from the 1978 original are in place. And then, John, maybe if you could go back to the, the approved site plan number six One of the things that's a little bit unusual is that we have this, this is designed to be a shared roadway back here. Of course, if they owned it, they would have the option of doing this, but this is essentially a vacant piece here that is still, it's also zoned C2, so, long-term, if they were interested, they could acquire this property here, do a complete teardown and start over, but if they did that, they would be, again, back before the commission's getting those plans approved. They can't just go out and, and do it. So-
Option number one would still require them to come back for any major-
Yes.
I, I think my concern is the same as Commissioner Blanchard's. No, it's not mixing in with a commercial development, but-
Right. Now, instead of being part of a shopping center, it's kind of by itself. So, the, the primary distinction between option one and option two is that they, under option one, basically, they can peel off the wood shake shingles, put back asphalt, take, take the mancered off, and leave the building more or less as they would like it to appear. If there are certain elements that exist with the building today that you want to call out as being preserved or them not being allowed to change, then option two would, would allow certain architectural controls on the store building itself to remain, but that would only be useful if there were specific things that you wanted to call out as not being changeable. For instance, my position would be they can't go out and pull the brick off because the planning commission approved a brick building, and that, that still applies. But it is, this aspect up here is what is unique about this particular planned development district, and it's something they've lived with since 1979.
And this has nothing to do with the gas canopy or a lighting, street signage, or-
No.
None of that could be changed with-
Yeah. Nothing on this site can be, even if you vote to lift these restrictions, there's nothing, they can't change the footprint, they can't add gas canopies, they can't, they can't do anything but what's on the approved site plan that we had up there. And so, if they, if they want to do anything that's different than this, or any different exterior than, than brick, then they'll, they'll have to amend their plan. But this, this is not a building permit plan. This is a site plan that was approved by the planning commission in 1978 and is binding on them, and even if you lift the architectural restrictions, it's still going to be binding on them.
Could you foresee any changes that residential, or the residents in the area would, would not want this building to change into?
The only thing I could see is if they wanted to somehow go in and change the roof structure itself. Most of their other stores have, pretty much have flat roofs and are, are essentially commercial-looking building. The, if you're, if you think that maintaining some sort of a pitched roof design is important, then that is something that could be called out. But if it, if it wasn't, then the main thing I could see them doing is peeling all that off and coming back with, but that is not their plan because they wouldn't be doing the asphalt shingles if they were planning to change the roof line at all.
Well, if they were and went to the, the flat roof, like you mentioned, a lot of them are putting the sign on there, signage on the flat part of the, the fascia of that.
Right. They have all the signs that they can have right now, and that's not going to change.
Right. Okay.
So, neither one or two would allow a reshaping of the roof?
That is correct. If, if their, if their request was denied, which is option four, they couldn't touch the building at all. They'd have to leave it just as it is. Under option one, they could remove all the wood shake shingles and the mancered. And under option two, that gives you the opportunity to call out anything about, that's architectural, related to the building itself, that you want to see that control retained. And then, if you itemize what those were, then we could modify the ordinance to make sure those were addressed.
Is the, the other elevation you showed there was on the east side? Is the, is the west side there? Is it brick also, or is it that diagonal wood siding? Because when it's-
Yeah, not, none of it has, that, that is-
Yeah, I can't tell from the, is that brick?
That's brick.
Okay. So, when they're defining the facade, they're talking about the little wraparound included in there too?
Right.
Okay.
It's, it's this, these wood beams and that.
Right.
You're, the overhang's still going to stay.
Okay.
And the, the shape of the roof is going to stay, it's that these would be asphalt shingles.
Because option, yeah, option number one is the wood shakes and, and the facade, just the main facade elevation changes.
But basically, number one just says, all that language that dates back to 1976, it's all gone, and we'll just have a commercial building with a pitched roof and standard asphalt shingles. Option two is if there's things that you specifically like from the language from 1976, whether it's about green area or landscaping or brick exterior that you want to specifically call out as being retained, then that, that would be an option to do that.
Is there any architectural view that takes place if, say, they came on this thing and said, "We want to completely gut this thing and change the entire exterior use"? Is that just handled administratively right now, or, or is there any sort of architectural control being in a residential neighborhood that it's not going to be?
There is not architectural control, but in all these planned development districts that were planned commercial, even in the case of the Quick Shop on West Crawford, they submitted elevation drawings, and they showed you, "If you approve this, this is the building that we will build. These are the exterior colors and materials," and that becomes part of the approval. So, if, if they came back, said, "We want to tear this down, build something new," they would have to do the same thing. They would have to bring back to you, or at least the planning commission, their exterior elevations for the building and show us what that was going to look like.
Because the PDD still exists, it's just the architectural restrictions should be lifted.
Right. This was a very unique planned development district that had this very unique architectural requirement.
One question, I, I make sure I'm not confused. If all they want to do is get rid of the, I mean, styles change over a 40-year period, and I could see, we got rid of the same roof in our house because the insurance was a lot less, but, um, what, I, I just don't see the reason to ask for more than what they really want to do. And I get the impression that number one, they retains options to change more than what's being requested to be changed at present?
It, I would say that option one gives them more freedom to, to do things, whether it's changing out windows or, or putting a band or something on the exterior of the building or something like that, just basically says, "You're, you're bound to the site plan, and you are bound to the footprint and the exterior materials." But if, the difference between one and two is that two allows you to, if you wish, to call out specific things, like if you think the style of roof, which is different than any of their other stores, is important to retain, then that would allow you to say, "We're only amending them to allow, as it relates to these wood shake shingles and, and the front mancered and all other controls remain in place." That, that would essentially be option two. Option three would simply wipe out that language that's, that's there for all time.
I, I see option, on, on option three here, it says, "Return item planning commission for consideration of alternative facade and/or roof treatment that is more compatible with surrounding residential development." Was that number three intended to provide more predictability as to it being compatible with the residential nature of the neighborhood, or was that-
Well, it, it could be instead of having a verbal description to say, "We want to take this off, and we want to remove these wood shake shingles and replace them with asphalt." That would essentially say, "Show us what your, show us what your substitute is for this graphically so it can be reviewed and see that."
I'm kind of inclined to, I'm kind of inclined to like that option because then you kind of know what, "Well, we're going to take it out of this look that at least is somewhat compatible with the residential feel." And if you're going to replace it with something, at least we know that it's not going to be just a metal flat roof with, uh, you know, white painted roof, or something that looks like it could be stuck pretty much anywhere in a strip mall-type environment versus, uh-
So, so, they, and it, it could be a photo simulation or something, but basically, what option three is, is that they come back, they superimpose the changes that they want to make onto this, they present it to the planning commission, and then-
Well, at that point, you would know if they were intending on keeping the, that style roof, or-
Right.
Changing that completely.
Show us what you want to keep, show us what you want to remove.
Right.
In, in their world, they, this is, this wood shake shingle roof makes them feel like this store is behind all their other stores in terms of what decade it's in, and so their, their first attempt was just to make, can we make that go away?
Right. And I would agree with them, but I would also say that you can go in two completely different directions on this thing. You could go to just the cheapest solution possible and make it look fresh paint and updated, or you can say, "We're interested in having this be compatible with the residential neighborhood." Maybe that requires just a little bit higher than the cheapest solution. And I, I would happen to think that Quick Shop probably has some interest in having a nice-looking facade, I mean, for marketing purposes and so on and so forth.
I can't stand here and say, "If you approve this repeal, this is what the building's going to end up looking like."
And I'm afraid that that kind of is a little, leaves a little too much latitude for, um, the, for the neighbors and that, that, that own the property directly behind there or adjacent to that. I think that, I think, knowing that there's a set of eyes that, that's at the planning commission level at least, that says, "Well, we know what this is going to be replaced with, and it's much better than, from a community standpoint, it's much better than what's there now than, I, I think is a lot different than, well, jeez, if it's, if, if it doesn't turn out looking very nice, then, you know, we're, we're stuck with, "Well, that was old, but it at least kind of looked more fitting in a residential setting," so, uh-
Well, we didn't put any, I don't think we did that on West Crawford. I mean, they just came with their usual look, and I don't see that it should be any different here because they didn't plan a shopping, if they planned a shopping center there, there's nothing happened. And there's no roofs around there that are the wood shake shingles that I know of. I go up there all the time, every day, as a matter of fact. And it looks really bad the way it is now, so I'd like to see them take that off and put on a better-looking roof, and I don't see any reason to put restrictions on that.
Well, I think one of the things that probably hasn't been contemplated here at all either is that what happens if we lift these restrictions? Tomorrow, Quick Shop sells it out to some private firm, and they say, "Well, jeez, we're just going to put a new thing that's easy to maintain. It doesn't matter what it looks like, and, and we're kind of stuck with that." So, it seems to me that not having any sort of, "This is what it's going to look like," is kind of a difficult position to be in.
Does it, does it still fall back to a certain zoning, I knew it's planned development, does it still fall back at least to a minimum standards of the, of the C, whatever this is? I'm not even sure what this-
Well, it's a C2 in terms of the lot coverage and things like that, but if, if you look at it from their, you know, their corporate operations or their, their corporate perspectives, they have locations around the community where, you know, they have kind of their standard architectural package. And so, except for West Crawford, where the, the elevations were, that was part of a planned district and the elevations were part of that, they essentially have corporate freedom in terms of Alberton, Ohio, and Claflin, and Ninth, and those locations. And so, essentially, where they had hired a contractor and they were rebranding all their stores from Texaco to Quick Shop Gasoline, and they had this standard package, and then they ran into this one again. And in 2004, they got permission to do this, but they didn't get permission to do anything with the building itself.
So, we required them to, we put a lot of restrictions on them when there wasn't really any, I mean, we didn't have any idea what else was going to go up there.
That was the primary motivation, was that the, the 1976 shopping center was the first commercial proposed, and there was the combination of it being the first, that it was near, was almost completely residential area, and a low trust factor with the applicant and developer, and so, the, the architectural controls have been strictly enforced. It's just that the only party that they've been enforced on has been Quick Shop and-
Right.
And just as a clarification, it's like, we didn't place, the city at the time didn't place the restrictions on the development- didn't place the restrictions on the developer. The developer set those in place and we basically have just enforced that through the PDD process. I mean, they said this, "This is what we want to do."
So, John, if you could go back to five. Essentially, the city commission said, "Okay, that's what he's showing everybody at the hearing. Take that and incorporate it into language that gets put into the ordinance so that it is binding on this applicant and all future applicants." And so this has been carried over since 1976 and applicable to Quick Shop since they first built their store in seventy-nine.
Dean, that was presented, I'm assuming, and you might know the history, based on an assumption that if they just said, "Hey, we want to do this shopping center, this development under straight zoning where we could do anything we want aesthetically and architecturally," that option probably wasn't going to fly.
Correct.
So as a result, they said, "Okay, we know that we're not going to get this through under straight zoning because straight zoning then in today, in that zone, doesn't give the city any discretion whatsoever on the architectural." So they said, "Okay, let's put that together." It was accepted, incorporated in. Really, your decisions, when you really think about this, and it's as small as lifting the restriction on the mansard and the shingles. It could go to the next level, which means lift the architectural requirements altogether. Or, and I think what Commissioner Blanchard indicated was kind of number one, but rather than leaving number one the way it is, which says totally lift it off, it's replacing it with, "Let's have a process to potentially have planning commission approve changes and make sure that changes conform with residential character of the neighborhood based on, you know, color, materials, et cetera, et cetera." So rather than predetermine what you can and can't do, you lift the current requirements and replace them with, we'll look at them each time. And the predetermination is conformity with the residential character of the area. Is that basically what you're saying? So it's not left completely unregulated, it's, "We'll look each time based on that standard."
Would that be any different than, say, the Lochner Building, which is obviously not a residential style building? Was that treated any differently? I was, so I was wondering that...
The reason it was treated differently was at the time of all this in 1976, it was owned separately by a bank. And the approved plan for it was a drive-through banking facility, which never got built. And so it was never subject to these same architectural standards because it was kind of a separately owned lot, not part of Mr. Etherington's holdings. And so what the Lochner Group did was submitted a plan that substituted the office building that you see there today for the drive-in bank that had been approved earlier. And so it was reviewed, the plans were all reviewed by the planning commission, but not for this rigid restriction did not apply to them.
I was thinking too that Quick Shop, as indicated by the new shop on West Crawford, has a particular brand in mind, and in my mind anyway. I think that it's not a bad thing to allow a company to use their brand and not try to modify it or fool with it or whatever. Even if it's in a residential area, it's not in the middle of the residential area. It's along a major street such as McDonald's at the corner of Ohio and Crawford, something like that. We don't have the same restrictions there as we would. I don't see it as being that much different from other businesses along Crawford.
Well, I have a lot, I was going to say, I've got about three different thoughts. The one thought is, is when you go to different communities, sometimes those buildings are modified to fit in with their neighborhoods. It's not uncommon to see McDonald's that looks a lot more residentially and so, so that does happen. I can appreciate what the vice mayor's saying about being concerned about the residents, but they have to take into consideration what Commissioner Crawford said too. And that is, you know, that's but a lot closer to residential or just as close to residential as this one is. And we didn't go through these sorts of restrictions with that. I think it's unfair that we sort of look at one area down...
I think they did though. I think that went through the PDD process and we saw architectural rendering and everything else.
And I agree with that, but I'm just saying as far as the roof design and things like that are concerned, I think to hold a standard any higher than what we expected on Crawford Street is really not a fair, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily a legal thing, but I think we're kind of treating our areas a little unfairly unless we've specifically said, "Okay, this area of our community is more important than this area." And I don't think we've really spelled that out. I tend to agree. I think the building looks fine. But I also, I have concerns like the vice mayor says, and that is tomorrow, it gets sold and turned into something else. And so I definitely want to think we have something in place. But I want to be careful that we're not necessarily asking anymore of this building than we did on Crawford Street because I think it may be still a little bit slanted, I guess. Maybe it's the, it just seems like overly regulated.
Commissioner's one contemplation is that the Lochner Building that's out there, in that case, it was a single building, could look at the rendering or description, however you want to do that, approve it, it never changes. If they want to change, it'd have to come back. This was intended to address future development of other buildings that are intended to look similar. So that's why it predetermined certain things, really more by picture than narrative. You could do it either way or both. But it was, in this case, it wasn't like one building, that's all we're going to deal with. Once it's good, it's good, you don't change it. It was anticipating other buildings being built. So really, they were both kind of held to the same standard. And actually, the difference is, is rather than just say, "You got to look, you have to look like your specific picture of your building from here into perpetuity", they said, "You've got to look like what, kind of this image. All the buildings have to look like this image." So they're really kind of on the same, a little different way of doing it because of different timelines, but on the same level, I would think. So I really think you do have some flexibility in how you want to handle it. And really, a lot of it is just to what degree do you want to regulate or loosen the regulations? And that's, I don't know that you're going to have a real wrong answer because even with the lightest option, which is lift it altogether, what are they really going to change on the one building? Because if they change the footprint at all or the site at all, it's all coming back to the process. So you're fairly well protected there. You are even more protected if you say, "I like the brick, I like the look of the outside. Don't change that, but do what you want with the mansard roof and the shingles." And if you wanted to be probably the most restrictive, you would say, "Come back to us each time you want to change it and we'll take a look and tell you and make sure, you know, whatever you're going to compare against residential character, materials, color, that type of thing." So it just really depends where you want to be. I don't think there's, in this case, I don't think there's a real wrong answer here.
Just two short questions. One, were there any neighborhood, was there any neighborhood objection at the planning commission or do you know?
The neighbors are, the, these are all rental units. And so Larry Kern and Kelly Dunn own all these properties. So they were notified and had no comment. They also own this. This is owned by, no longer owned by Lochner, at least it's partial. And then we had the Sterling House across the street and they had no response. And there was no response from this owner here. So no one who was notified came or spoke at the hearing. The only person at the hearing was Mr. Brazier from Quick Shop.
Okay. And the first option here, this sentence could just as easily end at, after original architectural restrictions, period? Because if you lift them, it really doesn't matter what you're allowing. I mean, it's basically a blanket restriction.
Right. It certainly gives them more latitude in terms of how they do the roof, how they, what they show in terms of colors or whatever on the skin of the building. But all, the site plan, all those basic elements are all still in place. And so they can't add or do anything without coming back before the planning commission and/or city commission.
Does that include the greenery around the building as well?
Well, they've got to maintain that and they can't, they can't change that. They can't cut down trees, they can't pave.
That parking lot couldn't be expanded to twice the size?
No. They can't do any of that without an amendment of their site plan. So the primary focus that is different here is that the site plan controls extend to the architecture of the building and it is very detailed. And in some ways, it's detailed but antiquated.
The other thing that I was thinking about too is that if we just allow them to replace the wood to asphalt, which is the request only, then maybe that updates the building from 1978 to 1988.
Right.
Instead of giving them what they would really like to do, and that is to make it a, you know, a nice shiny new looking building like they have on West Crawford.
Well, my thoughts are on this is a little bit is, and I mean, obviously, it's their real estate dealings or whatever, is are they really dipping their foot in the water to see what our comfort level is for removing these restrictions? And are they in negotiations to buy the lot next door and improve that area? We don't know. I mean, we can hope, because that's a pretty small facility.
And we made the point to the planning commission and Mr. Brazier made the point. He pointed out to them that if they came and decided, "We want to tear this whole thing down", they would still be right here today saying, "We have these architectural restrictions which require us to build a new store with this wood mansard and all this and we don't want to do that."
Right.
And so we'd be in the same boat. So essentially what he said is that if we decide to raise and rebuild on this site, we'd be back here before you anyway, asking for the same thing because we don't want to rebuild with these restrictions. And then he went on to say that their West Crawford store is their new prototype and at some point, they would like to do that on the east side of Salina. But of course, they don't have a timeframe or commitments or anything. Basically, the wood shake shingles are a maintenance nightmare for them and they would like to, they would like to replace that.
It's like us requiring you to show up in bell bottoms every day.
Or if I came in a beard.
Yeah. One beard's enough.
Good one, Dean.
Yeah. I mean, that's more what I feel like, is they're really kind of testing our wires. And I agree, this is an antiquated standard that we have them to. I think maybe if there's a way to, I get where you're going. If there's a way to maybe come up with a motion that does maintain...
Which is not really one of the options presented here, but under option one, that doesn't really change that, that could basically be left in place. But what it would require, it would lift those restrictions, but then still add as an additional condition that the planning commission would have to review the proposed material changes before they were, get a rendering and do that. That is approving it and saying that they can't just go out and make the change. Under number three, then this item would go back on the planning commission's agenda. They would request that Quick Shop provide them with an alternative rendering that showed exactly what they were doing. They would review it, make a recommendation, and it would be brought back to you again for this same action. So the option one would basically lift the restrictions, but say before they go out and make any changes, their elevations would have to be approved by the planning commission as before the work commenced. And that would allow action today. Number three would mean you're taking no action today and you're going to send it back to the planning commission for them to obtain and then provide more information.
Mr. Mayor, I move the first option that was just presented. I don't think I'll be able to word it as well as it was just worded.
Probably better wait for public comment, just in case. Just in case.
I'll write a second text.
You've got a game to get to. All right. Any other questions for staff? Thanks. Anyone here from the public care to comment on this highly charged? I've got to come up better described words. Ah, there he is. Look at that.
My name is Joe Hay, 109 Baker Street. You know, just looking at this, you know, you talk about they could move, you know, they could sell it the next day. You know, they've come to the commission, I don't know how many times, trying to get this changed. You keep jacking with them, they're liable just to move out completely and go someplace else. If you can see all of the other Quick Shops they got in town, they're pretty nice looking places. You know, there's nothing shabby about them. So I mean, you know, I think we ought to take the look at it and say, "Hey, you know, they're wanting to improve this and do something better than, you know, we need them to stay there, don't need them to move out."
Yeah. Good point. All right. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, that point. But I tell you what, we hear it all too often that, boy, we got to cave in and let them do the bare minimum and, boy, or else they're just going to want to leave. I tell you what, I just got back into town. I was out, I was out of town for about three or four days. And it's always amazing to me about how I'll go somewhere else and other community standards are, you know what? Yeah, we want an Olive Garden, but we're going to get the third best Olive Garden they built versus their stock, roll out the plans that we put everywhere that is afraid if we don't do the minimum, that, boy, they're going to want to go somewhere else. And I mean, and I'll tell you what, I'm not going to name names on things, but there are a lot of different franchises around town that if you go to, it is the stock, the minimum, the most mediocre thing that they have. And a lot of times, they'll roll it out and say, "Well, take it or leave it." Well, you know, we get mediocrity because we're willing to accept mediocrity. All I'm suggesting is the fact that if we have a chance to look at a set of plans, we need to demand a little bit more. I mean, we've got to have a little bit more pride in our community that says, "Boy, let's accept a higher standard." And then just accepting what they say here, "This is our store. Build this or else we're going to take our ball and go somewhere else." You know what? Other communities require a higher architectural standard and we all love to go visit those communities or drive through them or whatever. They're not even the best of the best type tourist communities that do these things. Plenty of other communities require more than just the stamped drawings that they put on it. And these stores are still building there. The one on, you know, we say the one on West Crawford. Well, that's a nice looking store, but you know what? Nobody asked them to do any better. You know, anytime Dylan's comes in and they build the store over here on Cloud and whatever, nobody ever asked them to do a little bit better. I'll tell you what, I've been in communities where sometimes it's just a, "Hey, you know what? How about a little bit of a wood beam look on that thing?" "Yeah, okay, we're willing to do that." These guys who did this, mansard and wood shake roofs, the planning commission or the city commission at that time said, "Hey, how about something a little bit nicer?" And you know what? They did it. So I think, I don't want to fall in the rut of, "Let's don't ask for more because they'll go somewhere else and do it." Well, you know, we need to give them the opportunity to do nicer here. I mean, I love going to other communities and look at how great, you know, "Wow, look at that McDonald's" or "Look at that Hampton Inn" or "Look at that Harley-Davidson dealership" or those types of things. And then I drive back to our town and go like, "Geez, I wish ours were a little bit nicer like those." And I don't think it really takes that much. I think part of it is we have to not have the mentality that we're not good enough for that. Because you know what? I think we need to expect more. I'd love to come back into Salina and go like, "Geez, you know what? We're really known for, you know, having a little bit better than average architectural features and amenities in our town." So, you know, we do it in some areas. We're talking earlier, the Stiefel Theater, they redid that, that's super nice. And there are a lot of examples where properties at the hospital have done, you know, gone over and above. We all recognize it when we see it.
Insurance partners, good example.
But this is in a residential neighborhood. I want to protect and enhance those property values up there because when we expect a little bit more, the overall valuation in our properties citywide goes up. And that's what really everybody wants because then if your valuations go up, you can bring your mill levies down. You don't have to, it's not one or the other. And so I just think, I'd really love to live in a city and a town that really strives for, and I think we have to do it incrementally. I mean, we're not going to all of a sudden have the nicest looking Starbucks and everything else in town, Walmart or whatever the case is. But I'd like to start expecting a little bit more. And that's why maybe at the planning commission level, and I'm not sure where it exists, but is there a mechanism by which we can say, "You bring us a set of drawings, can we say, how about a little embellishment on that? What do we need to get that to instead of, 'This is our base model, let's get some fancy wheels on it' or something?" I mean, let's, what do we do to get that up to the next step? And that's what my thing is and, sorry about the rant, but my whole thing is that let's, I don't want to be, I don't want to make decisions based on fear for not asking. Because, you know what, Quick Shop, I think that they're, in my opinion, they've been great neighbors, they've been a great part of the community. But that doesn't, it shouldn't mean that if we ask them to do something a little bit nicer that in some way, they should feel insulted by that. I mean, I think it's, hey, our expectations need to be a little bit higher. So I've said enough.
Well, I think the planning, I just think that's what we have a planning commission for, and, you know, I mean, they work hard on these issues, and I think that for the most part that we ought, when they go through something and spend a lot of time on it, we ought to back them unless there's really something that stands out that's, you know, makes the project really bad. I was up there today and those shingles really, they really need to be changed, they really look awful.
Well, maybe, just maybe, Quick Shop is not wanting to settle for shingles, asphalt shingles, but that they know that we could probably go there. And my, my hope would be that they would go way beyond there, and maybe we're not giving them enough latitude or enough flexibility or enough willingness to think about, "Well, maybe we should just go ahead and rethink this whole store while we're at it."
Right.
And they might do that.
And do something different and make a little mini grocery store out of it, or and buy the property next door and expand it, or I don't know.
Yeah, my hopes is exactly that, that this is a toe dipping in the water to see what our level is. I mean, they've been denied since 19 whatever, the first time they came in, and I agree with what you said on that, it says, you know, after a while, they're just kind of like, "Man, are we ever going to be able to build the store we want to build up here?" I think...
I guarantee if they came in with plans of a new facade, and that's my point, this is what we want to do, I don't think there'd be a single person up here, I know I wouldn't say, "Yeah, that's a great improvement."
Right.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
We're making judgments based on nothing.
Right, right.
I mean, in speculation of, geez, maybe they might want to build something newer. Like I said, I don't see anything wrong with saying, "Well, you want to replace that, that's great, what's going to be replacing it?" And I just don't see expecting, you know, to have expectations that are a little bit that we just want to make sure fits within a residential community setting.
I would expect more than asphalt shingles, myself.
Perhaps.
All I'm saying is I want a new Quick Shop up there, that's all I'm saying. I don't go there because it's too small, they don't have 91-octane gas, and it's too hard to get in out of the parking lot, so don't buy my milk there either. So if you could pass that along, if we approve this, tell them we need a new, a whole new building. But I'm definitely inclined to support anything that gets rid of that roof and takes away a standard that I think handicaps the look of that building and probably back in 1990, whatever, they should have given them at least some change in that, because that's painful to look at, and I have to drive by that almost daily, so if you had a motion in mind, maybe we'll...
I can do it now.
...see where we can go with it. Yeah, if there's no one else from the public, that's it. Thanks for speaking, yeah.
Hope this is worded correctly. I move the city commission concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve Quick Shop's request to amend or lift the original architectural restrictions and have, work on the wording, have the plans from Quick Shop be presented to the planning commission for review of its conformity to neighborhood plan or style.
Let's see.
And obtain a change in the wording on that.
It's the spirit of the concept there. Basically, I gather that you're looking for some form of architectural drawing.
That you want them to make sure that what they're proposing is compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that leaves a wide latitude.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay. I think hopefully that sends a message to them that we are interested in making some changes, but still would like to see some kind of plan. I think it's, I think it's a great motion, so. There's none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item 82, resolution number 14-7141 and resolution number 14-7142, granting license agreements to Brown Mackey College Salina LLC for private parking encroachments within a public right-of-way and placement of a private fiber line within the same public right-of-way.
Mr. Schreg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Staff recently met in a development review team meeting with Brown Mackey about their intended expansion into the building located at 330 Auto. If you're familiar with their campus, their existing building is on Auto and then 330 is a separate building that adjoins their current building to the west. And so between those two buildings is a right-of, a paved right-of-way that runs north and south and currently has parking on it. You can see that it's striped both, on both sides of the right-of-way, and is currently being used as parking. Well, as we conducted our DRT meeting and reviewed their proposed use of the building for a welding training facility, that then prompted a discussion about the required parking count that went with that use, as well as a review of the available parking. And what we noted was that there's gravel parking in what would be the building's front yard or to the south, and that really couldn't be configured in a compliant way, being in the front yard, requiring a circulation movement that would back onto Auto, and so the required parking was most likely going to be able to be provided by the existing parking spaces that are striped on the right-of-way. Well, somewhat unintentionally or unexpectedly, on all parties' parts, the applicant and staffs, we came to the recognition that while there's existing parking there, it encroaches on to what is the city's right-of-way. And so, that necessitated permission, formal permission to continue to encroach, and that's best handled by a license agreement. And as an explanation of the license agreement process, that's a formal method where the city can grant permission for private uses within what is a platted right-of-way. And so, granting the license agreement for the purposes of parking would allow approximately a two-foot encroachment on both sides for those parking spaces, would basically reflect the status quo. Our process also then, as a courtesy, involves contacting other utilities that might either be located in that right-of-way or might have rights to locate in that right-of-way to see if there's any objection. In this particular instance, the issue of paving is really not a question. They could pave that right-of-way for a typical purpose, and so, the existing paving is not necessarily in violation, and if there were utility work that had to be done, the disruption of that paving is something that would happen and then have to be replaced. The issue at hand really is parking on top of that paving. So from staff's perspective, it's our expectation that if there is utility work, there'd be a little bit of coordination involved, but the parked vehicles would have to be moved to accommodate that. There is water and sewer utility in there, there's Westar utility in there, we've heard back from our own utilities department, Westar and Kansas Gas, that they have no objections. It didn't come to my attention till right before the meeting that we actually gave the utilities a response deadline of October 14th. So, AT&amp;T and Cox Communication have not responded, we're not aware of them having any utilities within the right-of-way. But as I mentioned, it, we kind of treat that notification process as a courtesy, and it's not the question of paving, it's the question of parking vehicles. The other, the reason there's two license agreements is, one is for the purpose of parking, the other is a perpendicular installation of a fiber optic line between the two buildings so that the proposed welding instruction facility would be connected to the Brown Mackey computer system. And once again, that's a private installation through a right-of-way. It's handled as two separate license agreements, just because of the nature of the two were different in terms of insurance needs and some of the provisions that might go into a license agreement. So, the two issues before you are those two license agreements. I did want to call to your attention that not all the utilities have responded. I guess the other thing that I would point out is license agreements are subject to revocation at the discretion of the city commission if circumstances should change. So, we would need to be a little strategic if we want to go forward in light of the fact that not all the utilities have responded, but we don't expect that there's practical difficulty given the circumstances, so. And I'll defer to the city legal counsel and as well as possibly Dean Andrew in terms of going forward with the granting of license agreements, knowing that if we had to, we could turn around and revoke them, or we could possibly grant them on the condition that there's no objections received from the two remaining utilities between now and October 14th.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, are they currently using that gravel for parking?
Brown Mackey hasn't taken possession, but I believe the previous occupants were, and so part of this would remove, would no longer allow that.
Okay, and so, would that gravel parking area also be converted into a, into a more of a softscape, like a landscaped lawn area or something?
Yes, it not necessarily is associated with the license agreement, but as part of the site plan approval, they would need to address that issue, at least eliminate the parking movement and deal with the gravel.
Okay, and then as far as the, this easement because of the parking encroachment and so on, it's, it's basically just a legal thing because they're already used, they're already parking on it and everything else already, so.
Well, yes, I don't want to, I don't want to lead you to believe that they are legal today, but it would make the current circumstance legal.
Yeah, we're just kind of housekeeping here on that particular aspect.
Yep.
And then do you anticipate any of the underground, any of the utility service providers showing up and saying, "We got something in there"? If generally they haven't spoke up yet.
The ones that have the utility in there have generally had the recognition that, you know, if we're under asphalt all the time, it's really a function of the cars being in the way and just having to deal with that issue.
Commissioners, one thing to take into consideration, Mike, let me know if I'm stating this wrong, but normally, it probably wouldn't be a big deal to allow parking on top of an easement, because if they need to get to the easement, you can move the cars, it's a pretty big deal. This is a zoning compliance issue though, is that correct?
Yes, it is a required parking count issue, they need to be able to demonstrate they have the spaces.
So if we ever say, "You can't park there," we put them in zoning non-compliance. That's really the difference, that's why, that's probably the reason of the formality here, so just something to keep in mind.
John, you mind zooming out to the bigger picture again? There's a garage up there between what is Fountain Plaza or what's formerly, I don't know what it's called now, kind of there to the backside it appears, I don't know if it's part of that housing or something. Do they retain an easement through there, or?
Well, that is the maintenance facility for the housing authority, and the right-of-way that we're talking about is their, their means of access.
Okay.
Which is part of the reason why...
Yes, this one there, yep.
The bigger one, yeah.
Which is part of the reason why we didn't just talk about vacating the right-of-way in the first place, which would cause that to be landlocked.
Just as a, just out of more curiosity, maintenance then of that road that has now becomes a license agreement, who does that go to and what percentage? I mean, does, like if Brown Mackey says, "Hey, we're going to redo this" or pave it or whatever, and the housing authority says, "Yeah, we don't want to pay for that," how does that, how does that work out between those two entities, I guess?
Well, Brown Mackey has some private parking that they're responsible for, and then we, the city has a right-of-way which is the issue at hand. I don't know that the housing authority is involved in the maintenance of the right-of-way per se, they just make use of it to access their property.
Does Brown Mackey meet the parking requirements otherwise for their, for their property?
Well, they're, and Dean may be able to speak to this better than I can, but their current campus has a shared parking agreement, it has a whole history in and of itself, and it does have parking deficiencies. We've, staff has looked at the proposed 330 Auto location as a standalone facility, and it will meet the parking requirements if it's able to use the parking spaces that will be the subject of this license agreement.
So in other words, put the lid back on those worms.
Yeah, somewhat.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Just real quick, I want to clarify with Mike. Mike, because we're talking about a license agreement and we're just talking about parking, unless they were going to build something that would not allow a utility company to get to their utility, all we need to do, I would presume, is retain the right to tow cars for purposes, or allow the utility companies to have cars towed, or the applicable utility company, one with utility underneath, to tow a vehicle if they, if necessary, to access the, to maintain their utility. Given that right, if we provided that, I can't, I'm trying to ask myself what the harm would be for any utility company with regards to the license agreement, because in this case, it's not like they're building a building on there.
Yeah, no, I agree. In fact, that's kind of been the logic all along on staff's part, is it's not a practical difficulty, but if we wanted to, we could go, we could go to the added step of adding language like you described to the license agreement, which would then create the necessary authority.
I guess currently though, when we look at, if we're looking at a development in a parking area, we would typically allow, because it's, it's not a vertical type situation. We would allow parking, in hardscape parking, on top of utility easement, wouldn't we?
With a license agreement.
Well, an easement.
Oh, yes, within an easement, yes.
So the same thing, the reason the license agreements here is simply because it's the city owns that right-of-way, and therefore it's formally giving them permission, but from the perspective of access, as long as it's drawn upright, ability to get to the utility and so forth, it's really no different than the typical approach to handling an easement parking situation.
Yeah, it's very synonymous, other than strict ownership of the right-of-way by the city.
The reason I ask is because even if utility company says, "I object," again, in practice, if we draw it up, synonymous with a, with an easement situation, there's really no reason to object, as long as we can be sure cars are out of the way if need be, or they have the authority to move them in order to maintain their utility.
Right. A practical solution may be to go, to approve the license agreement, provided there's an additional provision that authorizes towing, in the event it's needed by a utility to perform maintenance.
Yeah, I'm thinking as long as we give them the ability to legally get to their utility, they're, the issue of their, I mean, it's a nice courtesy to ask them for their thoughts, but I don't see a reason for objection with that, because otherwise they would object to being able, us allowing any form of hardscape parking on top of an easement.
Right, and that's why I made the point, the issue is not the hardscape paving, it's the parking.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this issue? Okay, I'll bring it back for possible action.
Are you looking for two motions on this, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution 14-741, granting a license agreement to Brown Mackey College of Salina for private parking encroachments within a public right-of-way.
Second.
A motion and a second for adopting of resolution number 14-7141. Any further discussion?
Before we call a question?
Yes, sir.
One clarification, was that in anticipation of the towing language that was just discussed?
Would we like to, and I'll amend that, to provide legal accessibility to the utility.
Yeah, if that satisfies, I think that's good, because, I mean, if necessary to legally access that, their utility, it would make sense to allow the ability to tow that vehicle, and that I would think would balance the needs of everyone there.
Would we have to have signs or something there, or not necessarily?
So I think in this situation, it would be, just going to have to amend the need for access, and that could be, you know, for your...
And who's second in that?
I think.
Okay, is that square with your second, okay?
So given that, what we could do is we, you'd probably want to tweak the license agreement language a bit for that provision with, if that's approved, and then before we get it signed.
Okay, sounds like our motion and second, we're in agreement on that that was fine with their motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 14-7142, granting a license agree, providing, yeah, would this also be a license agreement?
Yes.
Okay, providing a license agreement to Brown Mackey College Salina LLC for placement of a private fiber line within the, within the same public right-of-way.
Second.
With the same provisions?
No need for towing, this is granting them the ability to put their line in the right-of-way.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero. That moves us on to, I believe we have a request for executive session, but before that, is there any other business anyone wants to bring up? Okay, may I entertain a motion for the executive session?
I move to recess into executive session for ten minutes?
Ten minutes should be sufficient.
For ten minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at, let's say, 6:45.
Sounds fine. Do we anticipate any business?
We do not.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.
Manhattan 77, Great Bend and Hayes 82. You're listening to All Things Considered on Radio Kansas. The time now is 6:31.